Welcome to the special planning meeting of council for January the 15th, 2019. Approval of the agenda?
It's moved by councillor Owen, seconded by councillor Perrier. The council approves the agenda for its special meeting of January 15th, 2019 as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous? Is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? None declared? Petitions and delegations? Town planner Ashley Billardal. You have the floor.
Perfect. Okay, first off, I'd like to just say that if there's anybody here for this public meeting from the public, I just make sure that you sign this sheet before you leave with your address so you can be circulated on any notices, okay? So I can circulate that if there is anybody here. Okay, makes it easy. Alright, so this planning application is a rezoning application that Kail Gold submitted, and it's for a rezone of the property from rural to mineral extraction disposal, and the purpose of it is to establish a quarry and processing site. So some of the public in the council may remember about a year ago, there was a rezoning application submitted for the number four shaft, and with that number four shaft application, there was a application for a quarry to be established just south of Goldthorpe Road along the railway. It's actually where this little rock outcrop comes in with a tree, or it's heavily treed. So, that one there got approved last February, or March I'd say. And they've since then have already depleted that resource for the construction that's happening on their property. So they're looking at creating a new quarry that's located just to the west of the existing one, so it's on this claim here, and it's to tackle this little outcrop that's there. So they're just trying to create more aggregate with their own surface right properties to be able to justify, well, to continue on with the construction that's happening on their properties for the number four shaft. So in terms of the applicability of the provincial policy and our municipal policy, municipal planning policy, everything is consistent. The growth plan for Northern Ontario does want the province to have municipalities focus on economic development strategies and ways to encourage the economic sector to grow, especially when it comes to aggregates or mineral-based activities. Provincial policy statement is also in support of this type of development. Our municipal policy also encourages aggregate extraction, however, it does make reference to the MOE guidelines, D1 and D6, which we've seen at this council before. The reason, in this case here, we're way outside of a kilometer from a sensitive land use, so there was absolutely no need to go ahead and do any type of noise impact study on this piece of property. So from my general review of the D1 and D6 guidelines, they were in compliance with those. From a zoning setback issue, there's no issues with setback, nothing's being constructed. It's essentially just blasting and processing on site. So the only other thing I did want to stipulate is that Kail Gold already has a site plan control agreement in place for this property, the entirety of their property, and on one schedule, they do refer to the quarry as, within that site plan control agreement. Within the site plan control agreement language, it does stipulate that you can add change orders to and from the existing site plan control agreement, having to amend that site plan control agreement. So that is what I'm proposing to do with this quarry. Essentially, you have the existing one that's there, we keep that on title, that site plan control agreement on title, and it shows all of the closure plan attached to it, and we attach this one in the roll file to say that they've increased or introduced a new area, and it has those same closure plan initiatives suggested. So just to give you an idea of where we're locating, so you can see here that the depleted quarry is highlighted and that the new area is identified here, so processing area is identified, they're going to be blasting facing, or heading south into that cliff, so the noise will be traveling north, and they'll be making a cliff that way. Is there any questions?
I have one.
Mm-hmm.
Ashley, knowing Caldwell and Miller have quarries outside, down the highway, sixty or one twelve, did the mine have to meet the same MOE requirements and testing reports that they had to go through?
So the-
Or was that up, the town itself can decide without that?
The town can decide without it. So what happens is they'll apply, our official plan policy will stipulate that they need to meet the D6 or D1 and D6 guidelines from MECP. We review those. In the instance with Caldwell and Peterson, they were within a one-kilometer radius of a sensitive land use, which is why we impose the noise impact studies and the odor control and air quality tests. This one here is outside of that one-kilometer radius, so there is no need to impose that on Kail Gold.
Okay. Councillor Owens?
Yeah, Ashley, just for the public's information, do you remember any of the highlights of the closure plan? Is it going to be left open and filled, allowed to fill with water? Is it going to be fenced, or? Just so the public knows what's going to happen when the operation's completed.
Yeah, so a lot of the requirements are actually stipulated within this Kirkland Lake Gold Quarry Site Plan Tech Town, the general notes that they've identified. So progressive rehabilitation will involve the sloping and depleting of depleted phases to ensure they're too high with one vertical. Topsoil or onsite overburden will be spread over the slope faces, and faces will be revegetated through planting. Overburden stockpiles be used during the sloping of depleted faces. Topsoil stockpiles will be spread over the depleted faces to facilitate revegetation. So it should go back to looking like a forest once they're done. You're welcome.
Questions? Is that coming back as the? We allow public comments on this? If there's anybody who wants to speak for or against, or any comments, please step up to the mic, identify yourself and your address. None declared?
It's moved by councillor Rick Owens, seconded by councillor Dennis Perrier. The council directs the town planner to bring to council a bylaw for consideration to rezone the Kirkland Lake Gold property from rural RU to mineral extraction and disposal MED.
All in favor? Unanimous?
It's moved by councillor Rick Owens, seconded by councillor Perrier. The council adjourned its special meeting of January 15th, 2019 to a regular meeting of council.
All in favor? We'll just have a short break momentarily while we get set up here. Thank you. Welcome to the Corporation of Town of Kirkland General Council Meeting of January the 15th, 2019. I have a notice to read. Council will be going into a closed training session on Tuesday, January the 22nd, held by the Walkerton Safe Drinking Water Committee. As at its meeting on January 29th, council will consider a bylaw to sell land on Archer's Drive to Dancor Phase Two Oxford Inc. We'll have a moment of silence before we commence the meeting. Approval of the agenda?
It's moved by councillor Rick Owens, seconded by councillor Dennis Perrier. The council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of January 15th, 2019 as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous? Any declaration of pecuniary interest? None declared? Petitions and delegations? Cassandra DeJardin, request for exemption to the animal control bylaw. Cassandra? Please state your address.
Sorry, that thing's really touchy. So my name's Cassandra DeJardin, and my address is 10 Gerson Road in Kirkland Lake. Just bought the house in April as my grandma passed away. Okay.
The light's on?
Yes, the light is on. I'm having that moment. Okay, so first off, Mayor Kylie, Town Council, thank you for seeing me on this beautiful winter day today. I'm 25 years old, and I work as a supply teacher here in the town area. I've been here most of my life, except for when I went away for university briefly, but you know, have to get an education somewhere. The reason why I'm here today is to ask you if I could have a mini pig within residential area. I stated in the bylaw 06-053, you are not allowed to have swine within town limits. You are allowed to have it in rural area, in the agricultural, but not in the residential area. But, this has happened for many years, but I am here to tell you why it should be allowed, for me anyways. So when most people hear the word pig, they think of a farm pig, they think of this 700-pound pig that is going to eventually be slaughtered. This is not what I'm talking about at all. This is what is called a miniature pig, a mini pig. So they are known to get up to maximum 150 pounds, but their average is only up to about 70, 80 pounds. They get up to a size of a medium-sized dog, so about the size of an American Eskimo, not the size of a Chihuahua, which most people think. Because of the worldwide phenomenon, people think that a mini pig, or some other names that you might know, a micro pig, a teacup pig, various things, various names like that, they are convinced that these little pigs will stay as small as a Chihuahua. However, most breeders trick you into that, well, not most, but some breeders trick you into it because they want the pig on, and they have you convinced that this will be a little pig that will stay up to 20 pounds, when really this pig will get up to 80, 100 so pounds. I already know this information, but some people have not. I've seen us, from one of these worldwide pigs known in, not in the town of Kirkland Lake, but within Ontario, Esther the Wonder Pig, she was supposed to be sold as a mini pig. However, when unfortunately the owners that bought her found out that she wasn't going to be a micro pig, she ended up being this 150-pound pig. But, I guarantee you, these pigs don't get that big. They get up to maximum 150 pounds, but their average is 80. I'm going to move on to my next point. Mini pigs are bred to be domesticated, they are not bred to be slaughtered, they are not bred to be left out in the cold and to eventually become our pork chops. They are bred to be loved, they are bred to be with families, they are bred to have that affection. They are bred to be learned, or not learned, they are bred to be loved. These pigs are very intelligent, they are the third most intelligent animal in the world, believe it or not. They are behind dolphins, chimpanzees, and of course, us as human beings. They are so smart that they have trained, that most pigs are, can be, most mini pigs can be trained to walk on leashes and have a harness on, so they can be harness-trained, litter-trained, so they can go to the bathroom in the house if you don't want to put them outside. And they can know basics, they know basic tricks such as sit, stay, come, off, and to come to their own aim. However, some people have also trained pigs to know sign language, they've also trained mini pigs to play the piano, they've also trained some pigs to be emotional support animals, to sense seizures, and to be just as plain as just heroic pigs. They have brought in mini pigs to be also therapy animals as well, for either general community or to hospitals as well. Also, mini pigs are hypoallergenic. So that's the nice part, is that if you have that kind of allergy to dogs or cats because of the fur, that they will not be allergic, they will be perfectly fine. Now let me compare them to dogs and cats, because that's what we're used to. In comparison to dogs and cats, mini pigs are very similar. They'll go on walks, they'll listen to you like dogs, they can be stubborn like cats, because let's be honest, we all know cats have those moments. They can go to the bathroom outside or inside, as long as you properly train them. They can learn to do tricks, they always want your love, and they always love learning, kind of reminds you of a kid. Min, or, I'm skipping ahead, sorry. So mini pigs can be trained through what is called clicker training. As we know, most dogs can be clicker trained to do such as agility or obedience. Well, mini pigs love you even more for that. You can train them to do anything with a clicker, and as long as you have one of their favorite treats, such as a fruit or vegetable, or especially Cheerios, they will do whatever you want. The most convenient thing for me that I've found with mini pigs, other than they're pretty cute, is that they can be trained to walk on leashes and the litter training, because in minus forty weather, let's be honest, not even our dogs want to go outside. So to have that convenience of having the animal be able to go to the bathroom in the house is always a good asset, and it's not very hard cleanup, they go in a litter box just as much as any cat would in the house. So now let me talk about breeders, because mini pig breeders can be tricky, that's why you have to do your research. Before a mini pig breeder will release one of their piglets to an owner, they have to make sure that there is a vet within their area. So for within the town of Kirkland Lake, Dr. Cat will see exotic animals, the vet in Inglehart will see exotic animals, and the vet in New Liskard will also see exotic animals as well, because that is what mini pigs are currently classified as. And mini pig owners will have them spayed, neutered, and micro-tripped, and they will give their new owner their own vet record, not their own, but the vet record that the mini pig breeder had beforehand that is signed by their previous vet. I'm just making sure I'm getting all my information. They don't, fun fact, pigs don't sweat, so you'll never have the weird odor that goes on in the house, as certain, some certain dogs do, my dog Daisy loves to do that. And they are not prone to fleas, as another fun fact. So there are numerous places in Ontario that allow mini pigs, such as Pickering, Barry, Guelph, Oshwa, Hamilton, St. Catherine's, Iroquois Falls, New Liskard, Bonfield area, and more. These towns or cities have owners pay a yearly license to have their mini pigs within the town, or some towns have passed the bylaw to allow mini pigs within the area, under obviously certain circumstances. They have to pay a yearly fee. However, not everybody can get a mini pig, as I said earlier. Each mini pig owner has the following code of ethics to follow, which Canada qualifies under the American Mini Pig Association, that they have their own code of conduct that you have to follow as a mini pig owner, as well. But in order to be considered a parent to a mini pig, you have to fill in a detailed application to proper beers in order to qualify, such as your name, your address, vet information, do you have other pets, and more. After that, the breeder looks at all the various applications and decides if they want to give you the mini pig or not, they want to make sure, especially because for them it's a business as well, that they are going to a proper, caring, loving home. The breeder I plan on buying from is this little mini pet pigs down in Coatha Lakes, Ontario, which is by Pembroke area, which also allows mini pigs. They were first, they were the first recognized breeder in Canada, and they were the longest standing ethical mini pig breeder within Canada. This family mini pig breeders ensures that you have a lifetime of support from your new family member, as well from the breeders. They help you along the way with any questions you have about mini pigs. These breeders ensure that you know the truth, that mini pigs won't stay the size of a Chihuahua, they will get up to medium size, and they make sure you are prepared for this, with getting a mini pig. Before they release the mini pig to anyone, they have anybody who's interested in that piglet or in the litter, fill in the application, like I said, with the details, they read it over, they see who is the most fitting parent to this mini pig. Once approved, the owner will get in contact with the new recipient and discuss payment, pickups, and more. All this information I learned from the breeder, from this little mini pigs, Jessica. I also learned it by doing my own research, and I also learned it from this Facebook group called Mini Pig Education Canada. There are thousands of mini pig owners across Canada that have a mini pet pig that look to one another for support, that look for questions, that always like, for an example, oh, I can't teach my mini pig how to sit, how did you do it? And people will get in contact and help out this member. Just like Kirkland, they're very welcoming and a helpful community. In conclusion, a mini pig would be an asset to the town of Kirkland Lake through their social interactions, as long as properly trained, their size, their intelligence, as well as a new concept of the word pet. People need to do the research before they decide on any pet, especially when it comes to a mini pig, because they require exercise. And not all pets require exercise. I have support from my family, as my father here and my family in the back, that I know will probably try to make noise right now. Oh, good, they're not. I also have letters from my neighbors approving that they will love this new addition to the neighborhood. Please take into consideration of me getting exempted from bylaw 06-053, which is the animal control bylaw, and allow me to have my little mini pig in the town of Kirkland Lake. I hope you enjoyed my little presentation, I have some information posters as well, if you want to look at those, and I also have the letters from my neighbors as well right here. Does anyone have any questions?
Councillors? Sounds silly, but do they, do they remember any time these things?
When a male mini pig is not properly neutered or spayed, they can get aggressive. However, most mini pigs are known to be very friendly and very sociable, as long as they are properly trained, just like any dog. If you keep a dog locked up inside a cage all the time, well, they're not going to be very sociable, they're not going to be very friendly, if anything, they'll be aggressive for keeping them locked up in the cage for so long. Same training goes for a mini pig. If you're going to keep it constantly locked up, then that decreases their friendliness and their sociability. So they are, they are known to be very sociable animals and very friendly animals. From what I know in my research, they won't get aggressive.
Councillor Owens?
First off, I want to commend you on your presentation. You've obviously done your homework, and, you know, I'm beginning to think that maybe your calling in life is to be the spokesperson for mini pigs. I almost left council to go and see if I could apply for a mini pig, but, you know, I just, so, would this be an indoor/outdoor pig that you're, like, is that how you're planning on?
Yes, especially for the winter, I plan on more having it inside the house than outside, but in the summertime, I would love to take it more out on walks and have people meet the mini pig, various things like that. I would love to take it out, but I would like to also have, be able to have it inside, because I would not want it to stay in a little shed outside in my backyard. I rather would be able to have it in my house where I can cuddle it, have it cuddle on the couch and watch TV with me, like you would with a dog, that would be nice as well, but I would like it to be an indoor and outdoor.
And have you been approved for an adoption of a mini pig?
I was approved in December, but I got denied because of the bylaw. Unfortunately.
And I have a question for Joanne, if I may. Can we make a one-time exemption, or do we have to change the bylaw?
Council in the past has made a one-time exception, and we did have one family in town who did have a mini pig, and the same sort of thing, you have to make sure that it's inoculated, it does have to have a license, and the neighbors in the neighborhood do have to.
So-
That's what council of the day-
So we could make a one-time exemption and put conditions on that we see the vet report that it's neutered or spayed, that it's, has all its vaccinations, and she already has some letters from, so that condition could be met. I just want to clarify that, because we're talking a bylaw, I didn't know if we could-
You can accept a bylaw, yes, a person from, and it by no means is precedent setting, so because you do it for one person does not mean that everybody who comes forward, you have to make sure that you're doing this for a reliable person. And my other suggestion is that there's an exit. What happens if something happens and you, you know, and Cassandra cannot take care of this animal anymore, then what is it, because our animal control place is not set up-
Right.
-to take care of these kinds of exotic animals?
But we could write all that into an exemption if we chose to go that route?
Yes, you can.
Thank you.
And I just want to add on your comment with the vet, that usually, what most mini pig owners do, they have their mini pigs seen by a vet biannually, so they always get chucked up every six months, just to make sure that everything's okay.
Councillor White?
Hi.
Hi.
Excellent, excellent. I do have a question, though, you did mention that the veterinarians in this area are able-
Yes.
-to take care of, where did you get this information from?
My aunt also gave me the research on that, because she knew how much I loved it. Thank you Aunt Linda, love you.
It's just because my concern is, I knew nothing about pigs.
Yeah, of course.
I did a lot of research to find out. I did call the local vets, and I was told as of yesterday that Tumiskaming Veterinary Hospital was the only one that accepted them, because you require a special license to treat pigs. So I just, yeah, I'd like to see clarification on that before we make an absolute judgment.
Yes, of course, I'll be happy to look into it.
Yeah, because I did call the Kail, that I wasn't able to get a response back in time for the meeting.
Of course.
And Inglehart said that they don't, they don't, they aren't able to support mini pigs at this time.
Okay.
Probably because of the special licensing requiring. So that's why I just wanted to make sure, because that was yesterday, that I had finally got all the answers back. Other than that, excellent, excellent presentation. The only concern that I would have is-
Is with the vet?
With the vet and the animal control situation, because she has stated herself she doesn't have the experience or the education-
Yes.
-necessary. So for right now, until, yeah, so it's kind of worked out, I wouldn't want to vote tonight on it, but it was an excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, with getting back with the mini pig, with what you were saying, that of what to do with it. I know for a fact that the mini pig breeder that I talked to, Jess, she has had, in the past, had to relocate her mini pigs due to certain situations, so if that were the case, I can always have her relocate the mini pig as well to a very welcoming family as well. Any other questions?
Councillor Adams? Yep, good job Cassandra, that's well researched, I got that letter like two weeks ago, and I was like, wow, that person's right into this.
Can you tell? Thank you.
No, good on you for doing all your research, and I would like to see a one-time rule for mini pigs for you, especially with all your research, you're certainly passionate about it, not just because it's some Instagram moment to have a pig, you're into this, so.
Oh, thank you. And fun fact, you can also get some good, pretty good media coverage, Mayor Kylie looking at you.
Any other comments? My neighbor, when I lived in North Bay, he was a vet, and he did have one. Everything you pointed out here tonight is quite correct, they're extremely intelligent, clean-
Thank you.
And very friendly.
I get that from my father.
The only concern?
Of course.
I know this wouldn't be precedent-setting, but it would have to be an off, an individual exception to the bylaw, because if we leave this wide open, next thing you know, there'll be chickens, or other animals. So I think what we need to do, Cassandra, is to ask staff to give us a report, bring it to council, and then we can make a decision from there.
That's perfect.
But very well presented.
Thank you.
And if that's it, thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you.
So I have a resolution that is moved by councillor Rick Owens-
So I have a resolution that is moved by Counselor Rick Owens, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perrier. The council directs staff to further investigate the option to allow Mr. Jardin to receive an exemption from the animal control bylaw to allow a mini pig within the town of Kirkland Lake.
All in favor? Anonymous? Acceptance of minutes and recommendations?
Moved by Counselor Rick Owens, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perrier. The council accepts the minutes of the following meetings. The meeting to open tenders for the supply of fuel held December eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen. The meeting to open tenders for the supply of a backhoe held December eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen. And the regular meeting of council held December eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Any comments or discussion? Counselor White? I just have one question, Will, maybe you can clarify this off the rack. I know we're not buying a suit, but uh what's that actually mean? Market price or?
I think it means a combination of things and it tells me that I should ask the fellow who does know. So, Donnie, come on up. Yes. All right, sure, Steve. O- often we try to stay with the same terminology that the companies give us so that on a comparative basis, we know we're speaking their language and representing it. But generally, come on up.
So we have this as a report to council later on. Did you want me to just present this now or come back to it?
The report to council?
Well, I'm just thinking if we're going to start communicating about it now, maybe it's best I just present this report and then I can address that question about the rack price based on my understanding. Is that what you want me to do? Yeah? Did you did we not bring a report to council?
Yes, it it is here.
Okay.
It is here. Go to the end of your uh. It is, yeah. No, it's um. A few, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I did read it, but I just didn't quite understand what they meant.
By rack price?
Yeah.
So my understanding and I I'm not a not a expert in gas by any means, but that would be the price that they're they're giving you, like that's the price that they're selling the fuel or the price of the fuel itself. And then what they do with that price, the rack price varies based on demand, supply, oil prices, all that. Um then they have a margin, the gas tax and the excise task or tax. So that's the um all of that is included with the or that's your, what do you call it? The profit. Your profits, you're gonna make off of it, so.
So that way there
Your margins, your profit.
So that way there there's an adjustment in taxation or whatever else is reflected without affecting the the base price of the commodity itself.
So they're they're not guaranteeing you with the rack, like a specified rack price
That's what I thought.
For the entire duration of the contract. It's the the rack price may change, the government taxes may change, what they're guaranteeing is that profit margin.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Normally what we have is our procurement person handles these kind of conversation negotiations. He comes back and just says, here's the recommendation.
So in terms of the question of whether this is normal for a two-year contract, we've typically done one. So this is new, we've gone two years and that was a recommendation from our procurement person was to do it for two and avoid having to go through an RFP every year. Certainly, if it doesn't work for us this year, we can go back to doing it every year once we're done.
So basically, the supplier has to stay within those rack requirements
Yeah.
Pricing.
Yeah, so what you're basically analyzing is the margin. You're you're saying, okay, that margin price is uh they're they're expecting this much profit based on how much fuel they're selling or the, yeah, the forty, I think it's forty cents, right? Or four cents per per liter?
Okay, so it gives us some reasonable stability in pricing.
Yeah.
Yep. All in favor? Move, asked, anonymous. Uh reports of municipal officers and communication. Uh the mayor, Northern College Community Campus Committee Terms of Reference. This is a new committee of a group of individuals, concerned citizens, including myself, that was started up about three, four months ago. And uh what we wanted to accomplish was uh to increase uh the capacity, not the capacity, but the bums in the seats, basically, students in uh at the college. And ensure uh long-term employment of staff and ensure that the college is going to be uh continue to be open and furthermore that the existing programs and additional programs be focused on to remain and to expand on them. There are some issues and challenges. The uh some of the program programming has uh been moved to Timmins and there's whispers on the street or concerns that uh some of the other programs, uh two-year programs, that the first-year uh programs may be transferred to Timmins. Now, we don't know that officially, but we want to uh ensure that that doesn't happen, at least lobby support. And I think it's important that the town of Kirkland Lake recognize the fact, the importance of the college itself, uh not just for the staffing, but for the students that they bring into into town. We want to ensure that uh increase that we could increase the capacity of the students' uh college. At one point, we had capacity for six hundred and fifty students, there's only seventy now. So it's gone uh downhill quick and some of it in in the case like in Timmins, and I'm not knocking Timmins because they obviously they're gonna look after themselves, uh but they have three hundred and fifty uh foreign students. We have about seven or eight. There's room for additional student capacity in at the at the college and that's what the group wants to work towards. So we formed this committee, there's approximately seven or eight people. And I am on behalf of that committee, I brought it to council and had approval to become a committee of council. So what we presented here today were the the terms of reference, how the committee operates, their mandate, uh number of counselors in uh in and membership of the committee. And I hope you've had the opportunity of reading the terms and reference uh package that was included in our uh counselor's package today. So do you have any questions, comments? Counselor White?
Sorry, um so I just, I'm not really clear how this works because what authority do we have as town to create this committee considering um that Northern College is a publicly funded provincial body with its own Board of Governors, um whose mandate includes to remain responsive to community needs and emerging uh emerging opportunities? They have their own policy and commitments to the community itself and as well as um a policy and partnerships and collaborative initiative initiatives. Is our committee going to work in conjunction with their Board of Governors? Is this a partnership or something separate?
Uh it is separate, uh it's more of a lobbying group and a a support group for the college itself. Our intentions are to meet with the Board of Governors along with our Member of Parliament, John Vanthoff, I've spoken to him and he supports this as well, uh to go to Timmins to the Board of Governors meeting and present our case uh to maintain the college for number one and to expand the programming. And part of the committee's mandate will be to determine uh what uh the the needs are for uh some of the our employers in the community. So there there's a lot of groundwork still to be done. I don't think we're going to be able to meet with the governors, the Board of Governors until uh I think it's mid-March, but uh that's that's the intent. It's more of a lobby group. Obviously, as you say, we don't have any control over the college, but we certainly don't want to lose it. It's a big part of the community. I mean, most of us can remember when we had five, six hundred students here. It was a lot livelier and they brought a lot to the culture of the town, plus the lot of economic spin-off from it. So that's the intent of the committee itself. Resolution?
It's moved by Counselor Dennis Perrier, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. The council accepts the Northern College Community Campus Committee Terms of Reference as presented by Mayor Kylie.
All in favor? Anonymous? Counselor Patrick Adams?
Yep, so uh this is an issue that I had brought forward when I first presented to council last year in September about discovering that the class D estimates, what they're all about. I made this recommendation then, but no follow-through. I ran on this issue as a platform, so I'd like this to move forward. So it'd be an amendment to the town's procurement bylaw fifteen dash one-two-five. That the town's bylaw be amended to require all soft costs be included and submitted with a class D estimate before any funding can be provided for a capital project. This will provide a more accurate assessment of all construction costs associated with a project to allow better financial understanding and budget implications. The budget implications would be zero. So some background on what the class D estimate is. They're pretty basically provided for all construction projects. They're defined as either being class A, B, C, or D. The accuracy of a cost estimate varies from twenty to thirty percent at a class D estimate. So if you're off by twenty percent at one million dollars, that's a pretty significant amount of money that would be burdened onto the taxpayers. Where you can get to a class A estimate where you have five to ten percent accuracy. So just to label them all, a class A estimate should be based on tender ready documents and include for all current market conditions, material price fluctuations, labor conditions, and current market trends. So pretty much you have all your documents ready to be able to provide funding. You have all the tenders received, you know the exact costs of uh what all these things are going to be. A class B estimate is a construction document estimate based on working drawings and more detailed dimensional from a computer-generated drawings and systems with preliminary plans for mechanical and electrical. Generally, such items as a structural grid, element size and weight are all determined. The outline specifications of all systems and materials are available. So in a class B estimate, you finally get drawings of uh where all the electrical systems are going to be, where all the plumbing's going to be. So these are items that aren't included in a class D estimate until you work your way up to this moment. A class C estimate is a schematic design development estimate where the program is set. The consultants have provided plans, elevations, sections, and appropriate palette of materials, as well as a concept designed to allow forms and spaces. So at that point, a lot of things have been surveyed already, you know exactly what's going to happen. So that's not at a class D, that's a class C, so now you have a better idea of what's going on with the land that you're about to provide funding for. A class D estimate is generally an estimate based on the initial function program and broad concept approach. Usually by this time, the site and program have been approved. Initially, the owner guess at the amount of budget available, which figure may be low due to a lack of up-to-date cost advice. Then after initial design concepts, consult- consultants prepare an order of magnitude estimate, compromise of elemental summary, and based on a rough cost, on a rough cost square, cost per square meter. This estimate should contain the following contingencies: design, pricing, bid, construction, escalation, and scope. This estimate usually forms the basis of an agreement between the owner and the consultant. A class D estimate is known to be about twenty to percent, twenty to thirty percent accurate, and the Treasury Board of Canada will not provide any funding to a project that is at a class D estimate stage. So at a class D estimate stage, what generally happens is you're going to get a picture of the building and you're going to get, as I said, a guess at the amount of available budget, which would uh give you the basis of to what the project is going to cost. So the current bylaw requires town council approval for purchases over a hundred thousand dollars, a request for proposal, or a request for tenders to be submitted. The supplier would still submit their bid as before, however, a third party or eternal staff can include the excluded costs to provide a more accurate cost. So certainly for any project that's over a hundred thousand, maybe we can change that to certainly larger capital projects, say, uh we might need a new fire hall, so we'll probably be going to get a class D estimate back from them. So basically, I would like to see that before we provide funding to any project that's at a class D estimate stage, that we make sure that we have all of our excluded items, specifically excluded for. So an example for that is what we have on our plate right now is the estimate that's been provided for the old pool repurposing. That is a five million dollar estimate excluding phasing, price escalation. Uh our previous large project, that was one point two million dollars. Professional and design fees, furniture and loose equipment, development charges and levies, financial costs, financing costs, abnormal soil conditions, contaminated soil, project management, HST on top of your five million dollars, inspecting and testing, post-contract contingencies, window drapes, curtains, artwork, premier labor, LED costs and winter heat to shell construction. That previously was six hundred thousand dollars that was not budgeted for. So as you understand, uh I like to make sure that we are, before we provide funding to a large-scale capital project, that we make sure we have those items in place. Yeah, we might want to say that the the banks might be a little thin these days and there's no projects on the horizon, but in twenty to thirty years, we don't know what's going to be happening. We might be in the the green and everything's great and we're going to be looking at a great project, but at least the groundwork will be established to ensure that we don't go down paths where people have to return to council and ask for a couple million dollars extra because it wasn't uh budgeted for accordingly. So I like to see this financial control be put in place. Something that Timmins did with their aquatic facility was they hired a a third-party feasibility study. So when they were able to present their uh costs to the municipality, Sierra Planning and Management was able to do a feasibility study with all the specific excluded costs included. So that way, uh the taxpayers as well were able to get a more accurate cost as to what it would be costing them rather than confusion as to why prices escalate so much. So it's certainly open for discussion.
Counselor White, did you have?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
So would be voting on eliminating the use of a class D completely or just including these, which if we're including this in the in in costs or analysis, aren't we going to class C or B already?
Uh most uh projects that are submitted, construction projects that are submitted to municipalities are do come at the the class D estimate stage and it would be up to the municipality to budget accordingly for the soft costs and excluded items to be specifically budgeted for. So what we're asking is when these class D estimates do come to us, that we can make sure that all the excluded items are budgeted for before we provide funding to that project.
Well, uh just to kind of clarify, uh not to bring up a sore subject, the pool. We had the consultant's report. Would that have initially been a class D report?
You had an escalating
You had an escalating series of reports that came into you. Buildings and structures is not what we do very much, and I think the counselor is definitely correct. If we're going to go about doing this, we need to be a lot stricter. I would add, my comments would be, you don't go to a Class D estimate at all. If council thinks that a project is a good idea, we would basically come back and say, yeah, we think it might cost five million dollars, and you should not accept that. You should be directing staff to go back out, price it out to the complete amount as you can, and have it then assessed by an evaluator so that the pricing is accurate. Again, understanding that that would be extremely rare, because you're, again, you're doing a building or a structure. But that would, because most of these buildings and structures you will not get funding for. I think the only one was Hockey Heritage North, and that didn't turn out so well. So I think that would take what the counselor is suggesting probably to one level higher that would give far more confidence in the public. And I think that when you're taking it into those kind of structures, again, you have to. In terms of what we normally do are road projects, that's the majority of it, we actually do scope those out inclusive of soft costs. I would encourage council to ask staff to provide the same estimate, project estimate, as they provide to the funding agencies. Clarity is there. You know exactly what you're putting in. One of the issues that will arise when you're trying to become more exact is cost itself. If you want to take something to a higher level of exactitude, then there will be a cost to it. Now, when we come forward with our capital projects, we bring a range of them, and usually we prioritize them. It's up to council to determine which ones they want to proceed with. I would recommend that you have a Class D that already has your soft when it comes up. When you decide that that's the project, maybe one, two, three, that you want to do, ask at that point too, is there a way to further verify these costs? Because if there is, we will put it into the cost of the project itself. We can do that either in our operating, we put a few extra dollars aside so that when you determine which ones are your priorities, we will provide you with the enhanced figures, or we can do it in the project costs as part of the capital. One of the suggestions that I'd like to bring forward is let us explore how we can get better, more timely access to information to provide this kind of data. And I would suggest at that point, other communities have done this, we should research it. What if we put a engineering firm on a retainer, so that when the project is coming up, we have access to that information? We don't have to go out to a tender all the time just to get what the pricing is. And we may be able to save you a lot of time and effort and dollars in doing so. So I'm taking the long way around to, one, saying, I agree, we need more accuracy, we do provide a great degree, we need more. How do we get there? Can you give us a direction to bring back some recommendations to council as to achieve that? I want to again emphasize that we're mostly talking about road projects, but where there's a building, let's take it to the nth degree when we get to that point. None of us, I think, want to have a second once-in-a-lifetime boo-boo on our hands. We've, I, I'm not going to make comments about the pool or anything, I'm more familiar with Heritage North, and there's no reason for us to stumble into that hole again. There's no, just simply no reason for it. But give us some latitude and flexibility to bring back some recommendations for you, as to how we can handle that.
I, Wolf, I have to agree. That third-party independent review will ensure that these other soft costs and other items that are listed here are included in the, in the estimates. Unfortunately, yeah, we can have the staff do it, and I'm not taking anything away from the staff, but we're all human, we can make mistakes, and having that third-party independent review would give us a lot more comfort in getting an accurate cost.
Counselor Owens?
Yeah, I'm, I'm no expert in this field, but I believe the council and the taxpayers should have the most accurate information as feasible. For example, if I was building a house for myself, I would want it in the contract exactly what it's, what's going to be included and what it costs. Otherwise, I'm going to end up with no drywall and just studs and no money to pay it. And I think perhaps in the past, council has sort of found itself in that position where the public was led to believe one thing, the cost would be one thing, and in fact, it didn't have a lot of the costs included. And unfortunately, that falls back on the residents to pick up the difference. I think we need some safeguards in there. I'm not exactly sure what the safeguards are. I, I'm not disagreeing with Patrick, I'm actually agreeing with Patrick, but at the same time, I think Wolf has a point, that we should get some feedback from staff to what they think, because they're the ones that are dealing with it on a day-to-day basis. I mean, heaven forbid that I had to deal with these contracts, we'd be broken no time short, but they're the people that deal with it, and they know what their workloads are, and they know what's feasible for them to do, and what should be contracted out so that they can still do their day-to-day duties. So I'm all in favor of getting a more accurate picture for us and a more accurate picture for the taxpayers so we don't end up in a bind again.
Thank you. Rick, I have to agree with you, and I think to some extent, the staff didn't have as much input on the, on, I hate to bring the pool back up. The consulting engineers, Salter Pealon, missed a lot of the soft costs, which we ended up having to eat later and just drove the prices completely out of what we had initially planned. So having the staff involved, plus that third-party review, I think is important.
If I could, Your Worship, the first one is, we have an eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the room, and that is the pool, and we do still have contractual relationships with them, so I just want to caution a little on that. No, I think the other part, and Counselor Owen alluded to it, when we don't set it up properly, the people, and I'm being extremely selfish here, okay, and not just because I'm a taxpayer, but when we don't set it up properly, it's our staff that go through hell. Because now they're trying to figure out from moment to moment how to manage it to stay within the expectations, and you're often taking them outside of their professional zone. That's a job for a professional project manager when you get into those big things. Just me being me, and I know my limitations too, I couldn't organize a closet, there's not a chance. I would want, if we get into a fire hall or a garage, that we're running it on our own. We need to have a little bit of arms-length distance to preserve the sanity of the staff and to preserve that objectivity that allows us to call something out. I don't really want to see our staff going through that kind of stuff and, again, and I'm making the point right now too, for even when we have road construction jobs, right? Okay, so if we scope it all out and we say this is what it's going to be, then we've got somebody out there having conniptions for about four months trying to make sure that it all works that way. It's healthy, it keeps us honest. But there's also a better way of doing it, and that is to say, okay, this is what we want to do, this is what we estimate, we go to a third-party and say, fine, now confirm this, and that's what we bring back. You will have an inevitable delay in how we approach projects. You will have some additional costs, but I'll refer back to the idea of a engineering firm on a retainer. That's not the only thing they do. There's other stuff that we can get them to do, and it does not affect our competitive position. We can still go out to tender after amount or whatever. There's many different models out there, and I think it's for the good of corporation, community, council, but that's my opinion.
I think that's very well said, Wolf, and I can refer to the solar project where our partners supplied the revenue estimates. We went to an independent expert, had them review the numbers, and if anything, they said they were very, very conservative. So it does bring that level of comfort and better understanding that when you're getting into something, you know, you've seen the light, you know what's happening. So, Counselor Adams?
Yep. So I know there is quite the speech for this and good comments from everyone all around, I certainly appreciate the support, but at the end of the day, we'd just like to make sure that no funding is provided to a Class D estimate unless the specifically excluded items are budgeted for. I know we're talking about some of the costs associated with getting those numbers there, but that would be minimal compared to the amount of money that could be missed on not budgeting accordingly for escalation and so on of those items, the excluded items.
I have one that's written exactly as Patrick has asked, and I've got one that's asking for council to direct staff to come back with recommendations on implementing this proposal. Which one would you prefer? Both of them?
I'd say both.
Both of them? Okay. One is exactly as Counselor Adams has asked, and the other one is asking for staff to come back with a report. So you are being asked to vote on both of them? Okay? And so vote yes or no on either of them. So it's moved by Counselor Adams, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens, that the Town's Procurement Bylaw be amended to require all soft costs be included and submitted with a Class D estimate before funding can be provided for a capital project.
All in favor? Opposed? One?
So it is passed?
Yes. Passed.
Okay, and the other one is, it's moved by Counselor Rick Owens, seconded by, no, sorry, Counselor Dennis Perrier, seconded by Counselor Rick Owens. The council directs the chief administrative officer to investigate and bring forward a report with recommendations for implementation on the proposed amendment to the Town's Procurement Bylaw.
All in favor? Anonymous. CAO? Report?
The title of the report is the Appointment of an Internment Treasurer. The municipality has, you're quite well aware, gone through a pretty turbulent time over the last, well, I would say now two years. The financial situation for the municipality is under pressure. I think that if we're to really, really establish the control over the financial situation and put us on a road where we can provide the services and the forecasting that the community deserves and the council demands, I think that there's a series of skillsets that we need to bring to the table now. One is the ability to audit, to ask very hard questions and see what the answers are, and to effectively re-engineer or backwards engineer any kind of process or accounting setup that we have within treasury. A second one is the ability to project. If you do this, what is going to, what is going to be the consequence? How will you manage that consequence? Third one is planning. Okay? What are you actually capable of doing when? And to prefer that, to provide that information to the departments as required. Another one is operational knowledge. Any institution has its own way of working, I get that. If you want that institution to work in a healthy way and in a way that it can be robust, then you need to know that aspect of it. Other one is simple confidence, confidence of the staff, confidence of the council, confidence of administration, that what is being done is being done correctly and without fear or favor. Trying to find those skillsets in a timeframe that is needed by the municipality, that will be extremely difficult. One is just finding a person. It's a tough market out there, especially with a timeline that is included in that. That would be easily six to 10 weeks of going out to post. Coming up, to steam, once a person is appointed. We've seen that in the last little bit, where persons walking into something that just is unusual, and how long does it take for them to try to figure that out? It's, also bringing in a new body is disruptive, and right now, we don't need disruption. We need a little bit of unity, we need a little bit of confidence, and we need a whole lot of time. My recommendation is that we do have a person that meets with the criteria, meets the criteria that I outlined previously, and my recommendation is that we bring this person on, put them in place for a set period of time at council's leisure, and we report regularly to council where the priorities are, what the progress is, and take it from your CAO as to when is the right time to go to a post and to go to a competitive process, and use the time that we're putting the corporation back in order to do the executive search when we have it. I think that the right person is Sherry Matthews. I brought that forward for your consideration. She has been working with us and has come very highly recommended by our auditors, as well as the financial community in Kirkland Lake as a whole. So I put that forward for your consideration.
Counselor comments? Counselor Owens?
Yes. We need somebody who has the level of education and experience that Sherry has. We need somebody to put our books back in order, for lack of a better way of saying it. I'm not saying anything wrong was done, I'm just saying that, there, with all the changes that have taken place and different treasurers coming in, one has done one thing one way, another's done another thing another way, another's done it a third way, and then, at the end of the day, we really don't have any, know where we're at. And she certainly has the experience as an auditor, she's certainly extremely knowledgeable of the workings of the town in terms of the Treasury Department, and I don't think we could get a better qualified person to fill in for the time being. So I would definitely support this.
Thank you, Counselor Owens. I second that Sherry Matthews is a very qualified person. She's done, worked on the external audits for the town and for low-income housing. I'm impressed with her work, her work ethics. She's found a lot of minor things that, some major, but inaccurate reporting. We have to go ahead with a budget. We need to be confident that those numbers are correct, and she's gone from the beginning and almost finished right to the end. And she's gone from the beginning and almost finished right to the end to get that information for us so we can move ahead. Without accurate information, we've been stumbling for almost a year and a half. The last financial report this council got was, I believe, June of last year. We've got some interim reports, but not a full accounting since then. And it's from a budget standpoint and from Finance Committee, it's been very, very frustrating. Since Sherry has come on board, I think she's got a good handle on what's taken place and what has to be changed and corrected and do the proper reporting, and we can use those numbers to get on with our budget because we are behind right now. We should be well into it. We will be shortly. So I strongly recommend, agree with your recommendations, Will. Any other comments, Councillor Adams?
I've asked a few people out there involved in finances for large corporations about this individual to see if it rings a bell. And they said we are extremely lucky if we have her on board, so I have full support.
Thank you. Councillor Perrier?
I just think, excuse me, if we were to pass up on this opportunity of not giving her at least an internship there, that we'd be making a huge mistake. And I'm fully in favor of bringing Sherry aboard.
I agree. I think we're fortunate to have somebody of her capability and experience. And she has municipal experience with the town of Smith Falls as well, so she didn't come in with her eyes closed, that's for sure. Any other comments? We'll go to a bylaw? Or well, it'll come back as a bylaw? CAO, cannabis, up and smoke?
At our last meeting, I think it was, we brought forward the province's options, opt-in, opt-out of the new cannabis regulatory regime and sales regime. At that point, the comment was made, we would like to have the opportunity for the councillors to go back to the constituencies, see if there's opinions and ideas. But to bring it back, we do need to make a vote, or sorry, to make a decision and advise the province accordingly. So I leave it for your discussion.
Councillor Adams?
Yep, I continue to be in full support of this. I know the license has been awarded to all the people who put their name in. Unfortunately, Kirkland Lake did not receive a license on that. So who's not to say this isn't going to be happening again? Or when this opportunity will be available? So I'd like to opt in to when this is available again, and would like to know the exact sum that would be provided to the municipality as mentioned in the last meeting.
Actually, Peter. Oh, he just went white. Peter, you had, you were briefing me on Saturday about the amounts. I think you said that we had received $12,000 at this point, and there was another amount that would be forthcoming depending on the vote. Can you clarify from memory if that's possible?
Without reviewing the correspondence and such, but again, just from memory, we did receive close to $12,000 in a first installment. My understanding is a second installment would be forthcoming closer to the end of the month. For, A, if we opt in, it looks like an equivalent amount, so approximately $12,000. If we opt out, again, going by memory, we would be eligible to receive $5,000. And again, if we opt in, there is the potential of future funds coming in to help out. If we opt out, those funds wouldn't be available.
Thank you for the Class D estimate.
The soft cost.
Go ahead. So that was the sum of 24, pretty much, so 12 was been provided and 12 coming again, so.
Yeah, again, that's, it was under 12, maybe 11.9, I think.
That's what I recall from Saturday as well. And the areas where you do have to account for it, and it is limited as to where you can attribute it by law enforcement, writing policies and that. But we didn't see a very good reporting regime to this point. It only basically says, here's your categories. So we, whatever we would be doing, we definitely would be keeping a track of it so that you can see over a period of time. I would assume Doug Ford will audit us at some point, but don't know at this point.
Yeah, in the, when they awarded this Lotto that they held, it, the only reporting that I saw had the names of the individuals or companies. Didn't say where they, exactly where they're located, whether it was Timmins, Sudbury, Susamory. I don't know. So it's, it's been a moving target, to have to say the least. That's it, thanks, Peter.
Oh, I have the resolution for.
Resolution for, sir?
So it's moved by Councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by Councillor Rick Owen. The council approves the opt-in selection for the opportunity to have cannabis stores operating in the community, and that this decision be forwarded to the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario immediately.
All in favor? Anonymous? Joanne, the CAO 100th Committee requests for flag flying for 2019.
So this is a request that's coming to council from the 100th Anniversary Committee. This is their centennial year that started on January 1st, or Kirkland Lake's centennial year. They're asking council for permission to have their flag flown from Town Hall flagpost for the entire 2019 year. This is unusual. Usually, we only do it for a month or so, but they're asking, because this is a centennial, would council please make an exception to the unwritten rule that we have? They also do understand that there will be other clubs and organizations that will request flying the flag. And so they're, they understand that council may at certain times change the flag for those. The things that I can think of is usually Community Delivery comes forward and asks for Community Delivery Month. We do the Day of Mourning in April, but we do put the Canadian flag at half mast, again with the Remembrance Flag and the Legion Flag that goes on during Remembrance Week. But they're asking for council's support in allowing this to happen, and they promise not to ask it again for another 100 years. So I do have a resolution that is moved by Councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by.
So any comments or? I mean, I have no objection to it, but as long as we have that flexibility to allow other groups to have their time?
Definitely.
Thank you.
So it's moved by Councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by Councillor Rick Owen. The council approves the request from the 100th Anniversary Committee to fly the centennial flag at Town Hall for the year 2019, subject to other requests for flying flags.
All in favor? Anonymous? Ashley, manager of planning and land development?
Am I going through that report again, Joe, or?
I don't think there's a need to go through this one over again. Councillors, any objection? No.
So this application is a request to pass deeming bylaws for two properties in town. These are typically, I don't typically write reports for these deeming bylaws, but because it's new for you guys, and I wanted to make sure you understood exactly what a deeming bylaw was, if you do see something in the future where you're just getting a bylaw that's being passed, you are understanding exactly what that deeming bylaw is for. So it's a requirement, it has to do with the Planning Act and how we subdivide properties. Under subdivision control, there's lots on a plan of subdivision that are considered separately conveyable. So technically, anything that you buy, a house in town, if it's on a plan of subdivision, the one lot will not merge with the other lot. If you are in the rural area, in our area, we have mining claims. You have a mining claim, L16655, it's going to merge with the other one if they're in identical ownership. So essentially, what you, what the deeming bylaw does is it deems that lot not to be on a plan of subdivision, so you're allowing the merging of those two lots to occur. So it only is an in-town problem and only if you have a, it's registered as a plan of subdivision. So if it's two surveyed lots, they'll still merge, but plan of subdivision lots are different, and that's just a requirement to the Planning Act. So in these instances here, typically what, the reason why we do them is someone will, they have a house, the next-door neighbor decides to leave, they buy the house next door, they demolish the house, they decide they want to do a garage. We typically want to see deeming bylaws happen in order to apply for a building permit for the garage, just so that you don't end up with a separately conveyable lot with a garage on it, because I'm sure there are, not to say that there's contractors in town, but it is very amenable to look at a vacant lot that has this 60 by 40 garage on it that will then maybe change the use of the property if it's just a standalone lot with a garage. So we typically request them to deem the lots together. The property then gets assessed and receives one tax bill. So assessed as one lot, receives one tax bill as one lot. And it, like I said, prevents that garage from being sold separately, which could encourage a more industrial use. So there's two proposals that are recommend, or that are being presented to council tonight.
Ashley?
Sorry, yeah.
I'd just ask a question on this deeming bylaw. Is this, I haven't seen it come up in council, or have memory lapse, but I know there have been occasions where the, one party bought the property next door, and when they got their tax bill, found out that it was merged into one property. Do we have to pass a deeming bylaw each time that happens?
So the deeming bylaw.
I thought the registry office automatically did that.
So they used to, and in 2010, I'd like to say, I introduced the process of deeming bylaw. It's a Planning Act regulation, it's just one that's typically ignored. And a lot of municipalities, not just, not just in Kirkland Lake, that's a normal thing that happens. So what happened was, when I came on and recognized that deeming bylaws were not being passed, I did sit down with Vivian Charbonneau at MPAC and explained to her the process, and then she reached out to a few other municipalities and recognized that that is a legitimate process that we're supposed to tackle. So MPAC will not actually merge two properties together on, from like a rule number standpoint, unless they have a deeming bylaw. Unless you are outside of a plan of subdivision, because then they merge automatically. So there's also rules, which I don't need to get into, but if you're really interested in the Planning Act, I could get into a lot more details about subdivision control, but there's part lots, so if you have part lots on subdivisions, those will merge. But as soon as it's a full lot on plan of subdivision, they don't. You need to go through that deeming bylaw process.
Does the same thing happen with commercial properties as well?
As long as it's on a plan of subdivision.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Councillor White?
Sorry, so if somebody in Kirkland Lake bought a half a lot in 1977, would they have to contact the town to have this deeming bylaw done? Or has it, like, how does that work?
It'll trigger if they try to get a building permit.
Okay.
So right now, Land Registry, and this is something I've recognized over the years, Land Registry does not, like a pin at Land Registry will not match an MPAC rule number, and it will not match our tax base. Like, it's just, it's sort of three separate systems, and we're trying to make it a little bit more cohesive. But if you have a lot with a part lot, there is a good chance that from a rule number perspective, you're only paying one tax bill, and you may have only one pin associated with that at Land Registry.
Okay, so if there is somebody that does, this is happening to, should they come to Town Hall and?
No matter if they do, there's a process, so it's a $600 applica, or $800, I think, at this point, because we've been, we've put in that legal fee with it. But it'll trigger it as soon as they come in for a building permit. So if they say on that part lot, all of a sudden, I want to build a garage, they will not be able to build that garage until that deeming bylaw process is done. There's not really a negative, like if you're, if you already have the one rule number, you're only paying one tax bill, and you have this one lot and the half lot, the only benefit to you really is that you could actually go to a lawyer and sell the part lot without having to get any municipal approvals. Even, the lawyer should be able to transfer it without any issues.
Okay.
So I'm not sure whether or not you should be directing people to get them, because there is that incurred cost, and it's not really hurting anybody. But legally, if they wanted it to be recognized as just one, yes, they should be going through a deeming bylaw process. So in these two instances, the, I think it's garages that are being constructed. Sorry, the one was a garage, the 645 is a garage. They are converting the existing single detached dwelling into a garage. So we, we put, we made them put the ownership of the property into one name, an identical ownership, so that once the deeming bylaws pass, they'll merge on title. And then the second one is for Rowan Avenue, he's intending to add on to his property. But in order to get the lot coverage and the setbacks that he needs, he needs to make sure and recognize that that is considered one lot versus two separate ones, because obviously that rear yard setback would come into play for the property that fronts on Rowan. Does that make sense?
Councillor Adams?
So Ashley, for construct and addition over the property line for Four Rowan, is this going on to his own property, or is it on to that one in the bottom right?
No, so what he did was he owns Four Rowan that's located off of Rowan, and then the Four Prospect that you see, that was a second, a separate lot that he purchased. And he wants to extend his, his dwelling north. So in order to go north, and if CJS is still open, you can go to that area. I think I left it open. Yep. And just look at the aerial. Nah, it's okay. Yep, right there. Oop. You just got to zoom in and then just turn the aerial into. Ah, sorry. Do you want me to help?
So you can see here, I'll try to talk really loud. He wants to go north, so remove this building and go north. So in order to cross this property line, he needs to be able to deem those two lots together so they're considered one lot.
That building's already gone, right? That's the back one?
Yeah.
Yes.
And I would encourage anybody that does have questions about lots to come see me, because there's a million different scenarios, so.
Any other questions? That'll come back as a bylaw?
The second, I guess this is the third report. The third report I have for council tonight is the request for council to withdraw servicing charges to Dankor related to 155 Archer Drive. This is the FedEx building. So council did receive a letter from Dankor requesting that the invoice that he received in regards to servicing charges be waived or significantly reduced. So from a budget implication standpoint, the cost of servicing this property was budgeted for, was budgeted for under the 2018 capital projects. It was 90% funded by the feds and the province, with the intent of recovering the 10% that we incurred directly from the property owners that were benefiting that extension of services. So in that, when we applied, the intent was for 5% of the project costs to be forwarded to Dankor and 5% to be forwarded to Artisan. So Dankor is considered both the landlord and the constructor of the new facility. He purchased the eight acres of property, which was transferred in early 2018 for a total of. He purchased the eight acres of property, which was transferred in early two thousand eighteen for a total of forty-two thousand dollars. It's roughly seven thousand dollars per acre, is how he came up with the number, usable acres, not actual acres. That cost was, you could say that it was, it was reduced in a sense to, because the property wasn't serviced, and there was going to be that incurring of costs for service extension by the private developer. Throughout this process, Dankor was made aware that the municipality was applying for funding to offset the costs. They were aware that they would be responsible for, for those costs. It is identified in the purchase and sale agreement and within the policy that we currently have in place regarding lot servicing. So I just wanted to try, or to try and highlight the four main reasons why we proceeded to recommend denial of the waiver or reduction of the bill. So although we completely appreciate and recognize that the FedEx facility is one of our highlights of two thousand eighteen, it's created new jobs, has great, has created new service and support opportunities for our local businesses, and we have received regional attention here in Kirkland as a result of it. What we're concerned about is staff, and what we want to bring to council's attention is, there's four things, so adherence to the sales agreement. We did put it as a condition of the purchase and sale agreement that they would be responsible for these costs. Dankor did accept the project scope compromises, so we did, we tendered prices to extend the services. We realized, we ended up going over budget by approximately sixty thousand dollars, and required negotiations and reduction of purchase scope, or project scope, to meet the allocated budget. One of the things that we removed in order to become, or to come into budget was just to remove some of the purchase fill that would have been required to bury the sanitary sewer and regrade the ditch. So instead of using that, we decided to use native soil, which would regenerate vegetative growth anyways, over the long term. So during the construction period of the project, we were informed of Dankor's need for the entire front yard of the property to be landscaped with grass. And we did, we did mention that if we had the funds remaining, we'd be happy to find, to do that for them. But unfortunately, by September, we recognized that we did not have the funds to complete the additional work. So Dankor did agree to complete the purchase of the topsoil, which, and then we decide, and we went ahead and hydro seeded that topsoil. So he spent an additional eighty-one hundred for the topsoil. There was the concern about avoiding bonusing. In the Municipal Act, the town is prevented from waiving the fees that are set. The Economic Development Service section of the Municipal Act states specifically that unless there is a community improvement plan in place, that's a requirement in the in the Planning Act, unless you have an active community improvement plan that specifically outlines how you are going to provide economic incentives to the public, and that everyone has a fair ability to access those incentives, that's the only time you can technically waive fees. The other one was to avoid setting precedents. We are concerned that we have other commercial and industrial businesses that are looking to come to Kirkland, we had one that just serviced their property on their own on Archer Drive. So we're concerned that if we go ahead and waive the eighteen thousand dollar charge, what's stopping the next person from also asking that from council? And if we do that, do we have the funds available from an annual perspective to dedicate to this later? So those are the comments that we came up with, with as staff, definitely willing to take some questions. If there are any.
Comment, Ashley. I'm sure when, this is not, nothing against Dankor, but any viable company, when they go into a large construction project, they do allow a certain percentage for cost overruns. I think in the past forty years, I've only seen one project ever come in under cost that's usually over. I'm sure they had some allowance in there. They did agree to covering those costs. I am afraid if we did waive this, we would be setting a precedent, and we'll have other land developers or purchasers coming back to council looking for the same thing. So I support what the staff is recommending not to waive the costs. Counselors? Counselor Adams?
Yep, I'm just on the Dankor website, looking at the other thirty-six buildings that they've been able to build, so going into contractual agreements and stuff like that. I don't think the municipalities should be covering those overruns, so that's where I stand.
Thank you, Counselor Owens?
Yeah, Dankor is a very large professional company, and they're recognized as being one of the top companies in their fields. I'm surprised that they would ask us to write off a fee, actually. To me, that seems somewhat unprofessional. Having said that, I'm really glad they came to town, and FedEx came to town. But you know, if you want hydro and you don't have a hydro line, check out how much that costs you. And you'll pay for that, if you're at the end of the road, you'll pay for that line to be strung all the way along and get paid back as the lots fill in. And contractors know this, they know if there's no services there, that they're expected to pay. I think perhaps maybe they, and this is strictly speculation on my part, maybe had some cost overruns elsewhere on the project, and they're trying to bring it, cut it back, but I think, you know, when we get a community improvement plan in place, we will have the ability to give discounts or whatever, but at this time, I think legally, we're obligated. And I know it's not going to bankrupt Dankor, but it certainly will make a difference to the people in Kirkland Lake if we waive it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Wolf?
I just, not defending Dankor, but it's just good business to ask. I can't blame them for that at all. I do want to caution that if we have a community improvement plan, costs don't go away. They're deferred, they're covered somehow. Our issue as staff is to, in this particular case, we've got an agreement and we hold to it for the good of the community. The, also, when you look at where the costs come from, that's your water and your sewer, and that's already under strain. So we're just being very cautious with that, but under the CIP, we'll also have to contend with that, just to say.
Thank you.
I have a resolution that is moved by Counselor Dennis Perrier, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen, that council endorses the servicing charges, charges attributed to Dankor for the property along Archer Drive, and council directs CAO to proceed with collection.
All in favor? Unanimous? Request from Union Gas to swap lands?
My last report to council has to do with the swapping of properties with Union Gas. There are no budget implications associated with this request, Union Gas is paying for all of our legal fees associated with this transfer. So Union Gas, there's a little bit of a hitch with this. Union Gas was trying to acquire a piece of property from the Jehovah's Witness and have that property transferred to us. That's still the plan, to have the property transferred to us, the only legal part is that it's going to come from Jehovah's Witness directly. So it's going to be like a three-way transfer, Jehovah will transfer us a property, we'll transfer one to Union Gas, and Union Gas gets their easement from Jehovah's. So it's a three-way partnership, the bylaw is set up so that we can, we can cover that. Essentially, the property that we are acquiring, Joe, if you're able to scroll down, please.
To the schedule?
To the schedule, yeah. So this is the, this is just a survey of the property that we are selling to them, so transferring to them. Yeah, there it is there, so it's a very, very small piece of property, MWRC has actually purchased all around that property. So it's a landlocked piece of property that they're simply using to expand their transformers that are there, or their stations. The one we are getting is significantly larger, and it's located behind their easement along Government Road, so that's GM City that you see across the street. So it's just, there's absolutely no cost to us, we are getting that piece for the one they need on Archer Drive. And it should, it sounds simple, but from a legal perspective, it's a little tricky, but pretty straightforward.
Any comments, questions? That'll be coming back as a bylaw?
Thank you so much.
Rob Adair, Fire Chief?
Late last year, I was approached by the Office of the Fire Marshal and Emergency Management if our municipality would be interested in hosting an Essentials of Municipal Fire Protection and Emergency Management one-day seminar. So I thought with the recent master fire plan and the new council, this would be a great opportunity for us, so I reached out to them. There's going to be no cost to us, and they just recently got back suggesting dates of March the fifth and March the sixth. So I was just bringing this forward to council to see if you guys would like to host this.
Rob, other communities would be invited as well?
Yes, yeah.
So we're waiving the cost of Heritage North?
The only, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I contacted Drew, and both dates are available for us.
There was one item about lunch. I don't see how we could send people out for lunch. I thought we're, wouldn't it be easier to have that catered and just build the municipality? Not our municipality, but the one that-
Well, we'd build the people that were coming, yeah.
They're not all municipalities, there could be some from individual or companies in there.
Oh, okay.
So we would just charge a fee as we come through, we've done this regularly.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's covered off?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions or preferences for the fifth or the sixth?
Counselor Owens?
Since I'm not attending, I don't have a preference, so whichever date can get you the most people, I think would be the one you should go with, Rob.
Okay.
I will attend, doesn't matter to me what date.
So I have a resolution that's moved by Counselor Perrier, seconded by Counselor Owen, that council approves the hosting of the Essentials of Municipal Fire Protection Seminar at Heritage North in March two thousand nineteen.
All in favor? Unanimous? Reading and consideration of bylaws?
It's moved by Counselor Perrier, seconded by Counselor Owen, that bylaw nineteen dash zero zero one, being a bylaw to appoint Sherry Matthews as interim town treasurer for the town of Kirkland Lake, be read a first, second, and third time, enacted and passed.
All in favor? Unanimous?
It's moved by Counselor White, seconded by Counselor Perrier, that bylaw nineteen dash zero zero two, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute all documents related to the transfer of land on Highway sixty-six for land on Archer Drive to Union Gas Limited, be read a first, second, and third time, enacted and passed.
All in favor? Unanimous?
It's moved by Counselor White, seconded by Counselor Perrier, that bylaw nineteen dash zero zero three, being a bylaw to deem six forty-five and six forty-nine Government Road West, be read a first, second, and third time, enacted and passed.
All in favor? Unanimous?
It's moved by Counselor White, seconded by Counselor Perrier, that bylaw nineteen dash zero zero four, being a bylaw to authorize temporary borrowing for the town of Kirkland Lake, be read a first, second, and third time, enacted and passed. Did anybody want that explained?
Any discussion on that? That's just the renewal of the operating line of credit that has been in place for years, it's at four million dollars. All in favor? Unanimous?
It's moved by Counselor Owens, seconded by Counselor Adams, that bylaw nineteen dash zero zero five, being a bylaw to deem lots six-ten and six-eleven, which is Four Rowan Avenue, be read a first, second, and third time, enacted and passed.
All in favor? Unanimous?
It's moved by Counselor Owens, seconded by Counselor Adams, that bylaw nineteen dash zero zero six, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with Parkland Fuel Corporation for the supply of fuel for the period of January twenty nineteen to December twenty twenty, be read a first, second, and third time, enacted and passed.
All in favor? Unanimous?
It's moved by Counselor Owens, seconded by Counselor Adams, that bylaw nineteen dash zero zero seven, being a bylaw to provide for the two thousand nineteen interim tax levy, be read a first, second, and third time, enacted and passed.
Do you want to just, just quick explanation?
The interim tax levy bylaw allows the tax department to bill all the taxpayers on last year's rates. Fifty percent of last year's rates is what they, what they get charged, and then the next, the second, or the third and fourth installments is when it does catch up with the two thousand and nineteen assessment, MPAC assessment.
Wolf? As I had said earlier, we are going through some delays with the financial process, but Treasury took the step to make sure that we're not going to be running short of money. So you will see your water billings going out with a notice that rates could be adjusted as per council's direction, you're seeing these features in place here. It just provides us with the stability as we go forward and make our decisions, just for clarification for the public.
Thank you. All in favor? Unanimous? The question and answers from council that were made to staff. This is a new part of our agenda. Wolf, if you would just give us an overview?
Okay, we had a number of questions that were posed to the staff that we worked on over the interim period. There was also a number of questions that came in later, and they are listed on this as well. I'm just going to my package and my fingers don't work together very well, hang on. One was for the fire inspection summary, it's in the package as, obviously, and you can see what was done in twenty fourteen, oh, sorry, twenty seventeen, as well as twenty eighteen. You see that there is quite a bit more activity generally across the board in twenty eighteen, fire department is staying busy for it. And if you don't mind, I'd like to go through that, and if we have questions, I can bring up the appropriate people. A question was raised also-
At the end or now?
At the end, yeah. The question was also raised about the responsibility of pedestrians. Basically, if somebody starts running across the street, why does the motorist always get charged? We posed a question to the OPP, the provincial laws cover this, and yes, you can, if you're crossing a street and the light turns red, you have that authority to walk across the street. You can't run across the street when the light turns red, you know, and put other people into jeopardy. Next one was on near misses. Andy had prepared from both a twenty seventeen as well as a twenty eighteen perspective. You see that the number of near misses, especially for Works Department, has increased significantly. That reflects the fact that we're, we have someone on site and that is taking action on it and recording it. Now, in terms of the future, we had that discussion last time. We are trying to implement some measures that hopefully will reduce both the frequency of this, as well as any seriousness that can come from it. That includes cameras, that includes public education program. We have identified the camera that we want to test out. We're also right now talking with the lawyers to make sure we're not contradicting anything on human rights and privacy. So we'll be bringing that back as we proceed. The Derelict Buildings, staff prepared a response to the questions that were put forward. Essentially, we are working- essentially, we are working within the parameters that we are supposed to work within in terms of the Construction Act. Are we cognizant that more can be done? Yes. Uh, and we will explore what we can do. We will also bring back to council to indicate where costs could be affected and timelines, et cetera. Uh, it's, for us, we have to balance all those factors. Safety is foremost. But we want to make sure we are being responsible as we bring it forward. The, there is an SOP that will be in development. We are comparing that to the other municipalities. And like most SOPs, we'll bring that, we'll make you aware of it and we will adjust it as we see changes coming through the pipe. Our, our practices are commented upon. Last one then. There are a number of other questions that came forward. I believe they were from you, Ms. White. And policies, procedures applying to vacant and derelict buildings. Um, I think that's a good question. We had answered it on an informal basis with council before they had assumed their seats. I think that is a good thing to bring out into the public, so we'll prepare that. Uh, pigeon issue. I was speaking with the OPP on that today and there, a lot of the communities are still struggling with it. We will bring back a report that tells you what our options are. I, I can almost promise you, you will not be particularly happy with them, but we have to address them. Uh, Wilson Avenue Building Lots, that was a hangover from twenty ten, twenty eleven, if I remember correctly. There were some issues with infrastructure servicing. We'll give you a short response to that. And I think that's the end of my ramble through there.
Comments from councils? Councilor Owens?
Yeah, I just, I'm, I'm glad Wolf made it clear that, that in terms of near misses, part of that, it's not as drastic as what it looks. Part of that is we are now reporting, recording near misses. My question would be, with the Works Department, are, are these near misses, do most of them have to do with snow plowing and snow removal and motors or pedestrians not obeying flag people, traffic control people? Or, or snowmobiles not obeying traffic control people that we have on site?
I think it's fair to say that there's a range of different factors and scenarios. I would think that, uh, the scenarios that you're describing, when we have snow removal, et cetera, were in the public in a spot on a broader footprint for a longer period of time, so that's where you're seeing that. Um, but it will happen in the summertime as well. We've seen that happening when they were doing work on Government Road for water line replacements and that. The point is, yes, I think people are a little bit, how would you say that? Uh, a little bit calloused in their attitude to having somebody tell them what to do on the road. And it, it probably comes in waves. I, I, I remember as a kid, you know, there was a point where everybody took a run at the guy who was holding the flag because, hey, it was a target. And then you had a real change in after that and probably going to see that as well. In our case, uh, we're looking at it from two perspectives. One is how can we minimize where the guys are in contact where vehicles come through? Second one is what can we do preventative and corrective? That's where Andy comes in with the camera and an education process. We're not out here to nail the public. But we probably do have to go through a period of time where we show that we do mean business with it and we do have the OPP support in that.
If I could just follow up on that. I was gonna, my big concern here is not whether or not people get tickets. I really don't care. My concern is the health and safety of the town employees. And I was gonna suggest that when we're doing uh, s, snow pulls and, and removal, and when we do have flagmen on the road in the summertime, that we make the OPP aware. Because I'm sure a little enforcement will go a long way to increasing the safety of the town workers. And let's, let's face it, that's gotta be priority. If my neighbor gets a ticket for ignoring a flagman, well, I, I really don't feel sorry for him. Um, we gotta make sure that our workers have a, a safe place to work. And I think emphasizing this to the OPP could be part of the solution.
I agree. This morning, they were working outside my house and it began around five. Uh, I noticed two things. One is the cruiser did come by, which, five-thirty in the morning, what are you doing there? But the other part was that I noticed a, what, to me, I'm not going to say that it is true, but a, looked like a change in the operating too, where the trucks, when the guys were working, the pickups were very effectively blocking what can go in and out. And I think that that's a, I commend the, the Works Department on changing its practices to keep up with what the, the pressures are. Um, I believe that they have implemented as well toolbox and tail-end truck talks and that, where if there's something has gone on, what's the feedback from the guys? What did they see? It may not be the same thing as what we see as managers. So I commend to the, to the Works Department for taking that initiative.
Councilor Adams?
Yeah, I just, for the safety stats, I'd just like to thank Andy for providing this. I'm also involved in health and safety. And these are numbers that I like to see where you have a higher amount of near misses before you have accidents. In twenty seventeen, there was fifteen accidents and only four near misses. Reporting near misses is a great way to track a trend before something happens. And certainly commend Andy for coming forward a couple of meetings ago to discuss the issue of people driving through the signs, which has been able us to provide guidance to make sure that this is appropriately dealt with. When we were doing our tours with, uh, all the departments before we got these positions, TPR mentioned about the amount of incidents that they had with their staff. Unfortunately, these aren't reflected here in these numbers. Would it be possible to see? Because I think they would also would like to see some near misses and just kind of reports that they're kind of talking about.
For sure. I, I think that-
Oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say, uh, TPR does have that information. I know what the, having served on that Board of Management, they do have that report.
I was going to suggest too that, um, there's a number of issues right across the board that we'd like to bring back to council on a more regular basis and that perhaps a, a year-end safety summary as well. Because Andy has with the minutes with the Joint Health and Safety Committee already, just to summarize what were the issues, what, things like that. So you do get to see that and we definitely make sure that we do have that in there.
Patrick? Oh, Casey, sorry. You're finished, but-
Uh, I need some clarifications on, uh, the road maintenance. So I don't know if we want to bring-
If you could, gentlemen, come on up. We all know how well I do at answering hard questions, so if you don't want that.
First, I just want to commend the town. The snow removal people do a great job. I'm not complaining on the level of services we're getting. I just need some clarifications on how, uh, the new plan that we voted on last time is being implemented. It was presented as there's classifications of roads, there's class three, four, and five in Kirkland Lake. And my understanding was that when you're doing a snow pull, or even if you're doing snow removal, class three gets done before class four and four before five and five and so on. But what's being observed right now is not reflected in my understanding of what the procedure should be. So I need clarifications on that. That's the first question. I'll have another one afterwards.
So the events that occurred, uh, we were working on a class three pole, which, which entails Kirkpatrick, uh, Government Road up into the Chappie area, Chappie itself, and Swastika, also Queen Street. And the events that had occurred that day was we were doing the pole, walking the banks up on Government Road, into Chappie area. The blower had broke down. We had hired equipment. So the chain of events as a group, we felt, including myself, of course, we felt it to be more efficient for the staff that we had hired, the equipment, I should say, that we had hired and the staff to keep moving because the blower was down, to keep moving on Fifth Street, being the safety, a little bit more safe, not as busy as the highway is. Also, we could remove more snow with the blower in those areas. So that's one of the reasons we, we had gone to some offbeat streets, I'd say. Plus, the plan of events that, that were gonna come forward were to continue the number one pole, which we didn't get to complete because of the volume of the snow. We had to modify the number one, which was the Wood Street, Main Street loop. And LaBelle from, uh, from Kirkland to Kirkpatrick. So we wanted to gather that, that, those up. And in, at the same time, sorry, we were going to include Kirkpatrick, which is part of, part of number three, and Chappie area. And they also pulled Water Lane as well. So that's sometimes why we rotate or alternate different areas. There's either a breakdown or garbage pickup might be an, an issue as well in some of these areas, so we want to try and avoid. And that's why we choose some of the areas.
Is there a way we can communicate this better to, like, I'm taking it from a citizen's point of view, like, we know when you're gonna do a snow pull. It's your way to get a report. Okay, well, if it wasn't done or wasn't completed, like, not necessarily going in details for staffing, but as to why it wasn't done or completed or the order wasn't followed, like, uh, because the plan's accessible to the public, so if the plan's accessible to the public, we should be able to inform the people. Or through Facebook or whatever, because it works, like, I mean, information's out there fast and it gets, gets spread around pretty quickly.
I'm, I'm sure we could look at, like, announcements on Facebook. Like, we do put an announcement out in the areas, for example, where we're going to be tomorrow morning or early AM.
Breaking early.
But when you have a breakdown and those area, and then plus, we also noted, make a note that we put various areas.
That's the follow, that's the follow-up question, yeah. So-
Okay, but, no, I, I do believe that we could inherit another way of notifying the people in, in a situation that would have occurred, sure.
Okay, I noticed in the, because you send us out notifications of what's coming up the next day, what's being pulled or whatever, and all of a sudden between the one we got yesterday and the one we got today, now there's a little paragraph, or little words, various areas has been added. Does this modify the, um, the, the, the plan we got? This is, because that wasn't in the original papers we used to get. So is there a modification to the plan that needs to be made? Or is it just in following in this plan?
It's just basically in fol, following the plan. But if, if we also get ahead of the game and there isn't as much volume within the areas we wish to pull, then we will move forward and gather more. I think what we wanted to try and include various areas was to finish up this number three pole up here down in the third beat. And then, and like I said, it's, if we get ahead of the game, we, we can pull extra. We had, we really didn't intend on pulling Water Lane let, the, early this morning, but the crews felt that, that they could do it. Then the blower broke down for a wee bit and back up and running, but. I, yeah, I hope that I-
Yeah, I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Yeah, Steve, you have any, I understand.
Your worship. Through you to the council. Um, the maps that you have in front of you were designed several years ago. And that area that's covered under that, those different routes or poles, as we like to call them, are when the conditions are ideal, when we have the, a normal amount of snowfall, a normal, uh, a normal amount of, uh, if we can get the right amount of hired trucks. Okay, so we, again, when we try to do a pole, we try to have at least six triaxes. We've been having difficulty last year, this year, and it's, again, because of the way the rules changed for some of the smaller businesses. It's becoming increasingly difficult at times to get the right amount of equipment. There's other factors that become into play that, again, breakdowns, as, as, as Dawn had mentioned, uh, the length of the breakdown also affects what we do as well. There, and I believe Ashley had mentioned that in that plan, there were factors that affect it. So even though it's, it's easy to say, well, you didn't get this done, but if you look at the whole picture, you say, okay, but there are factors, extenuating circumstances that do appear from time to time and sometimes, uh, sometimes, as I said, with the not being able to get the right amount of contractors' trucks, that slows down the progress or impedes the progress. Some of it we can help, some of it we can't predict, but we do the best that we can. And again, we have to take in consider, consideration school zones, timing, as well as, as traffic. So there are a lot of factors that come into deciding where we go should something happen. To keep it efficient as possible, we just, we make these decisions a, as a team to try and keep things going, as we say, even though we can't do, uh, say the blower goes down and which is, which is part of the problem. It's aging. It's, it's having a little bit of trouble. We had it reconditioned four years ago, but it's not, it's old. It needs to be replaced desperately. To maintain the, the integrity of the plans, you need, you need reliable equipment and it's getting to the point where we've reached that point of diminishing returns on the, on the equipment. And we have to seriously spend, uh, uh, money to get back to where we should be. Anyway, hopefully that answers your question and I didn't throw too much at you, but-
No, no, I'm satisfied. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilor Owens?
Well, thanks for taking the punch out of my question, Steve. I wanted to know how old the blower is and if we should be setting aside money now. Because I've sat in council for many years and it seems every winter it's the same story over and over and over again. Our, our snow removal's being impacted because the blower's broken down. And, and, um, so I just wanted to note here that I think it's time that we show some thinking ahead and start to put some money away in our budget to, uh, to give the worker, the employees the proper equipment to do the job properly. Because it's hard to do it when you, when you go from a blower to a, a front-end loader or whatever you call those. It, it's a lot slower process.
Good point, Rick. And Steve, I'm not sure, but I think the same topic came up about the cost of replacing that blower is in three, four hundred thousand dollars minimum, not a used one, eh?
Your worship. The, the cost of the blower that we're looking at, uh, going forward, uh, is, is slightly larger than the one that we have now. Uh, and that its approximate value, uh, last year, I believe I got the estimate for is it's around the two hundred thousand dollar range.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the loader that, that, that drags it around, uh, unfortunately, is in the same, uh, condition as the, the blower and it's, you're looking at four hundred thousand dollars for it. So you're probably looking at pretty close to three quarters of a million dollars for that outfit.
We better start putting some money away. I agree. Is that done? Oh, yeah, Wolf, sorry.
Previously, we had talked about strategic planning and that, and one of the things that we, as a group, made a commitment to was to try to map out where we will have issues or problems and how they could be addressed. One of those is with the fleet management. Works Department is putting together a profile of the fleet and associated with that will be what equipment needs to be replaced at what time. And perhaps working with Treasury, a strategy for how we can actually try to manage that. It could be a combination of different approaches. But we would like to try to bring that forward as we get our capital budget deliberations, just so you have an idea. Now, you do have a lot of competing demands just within the equipment fleet. So there's a grader, there's a front loader, there's the blower. And, uh, we'll, what we will be doing is, uh, in addition to speaking to roads management, the mechanics get their idea of what can last, what can't last, uh, what the priorities are and bring those forward for your deliberation.
I had a question from a resident-
I had a question from a resident about the process of how we do the snow pulls from the downtown core. They saw that loading the snow into the middle of the road would, it's like doing the job twice. Would just be able to provide clarification as why that would be the rest, best route, rather than being able to put it into a truck right away?
Through you, your worship, I think both Steve and I could probably touch base on this. In different conditions in the winter months, it's hard to walk the bank with the blower because of ice conditions, and so the banks will get very hard. So, in the process that we follow, and that we've inherited, it's pulling the bank, so it breaks up that, that ice stuff or those conditions on the edge of the roadway, pulls it out to the center of the road, and allows us to use the blower, which keeps us away from the curbs, which has been very hard on our blower, and damages the blower, because they're not designed to run the curbs, so we have to stay off the curb. So, even doing so, we still pull, have to get the loader behind to pull that material out, so, we find it just a little bit more feasible, or, no, I shouldn't say feasible, but efficient, to get it out to the center of the road.
Would I even just be able to get that response in writing, sorry, just so I can send that to the constituent that asked that question?
Donnie, how's your penmanship?
It's getting good, or?
Yeah, okay. I, I'd like to make one comment, because, Counselor, you, you raised it, and on my way in, I was stopped both by the gentleman owning the taxi company across the street, and ironically, by two other people. When you guys did the pull here, you moved the center bank back, you know, up towards that staircase is, going up that thing, and very good comments on that, in terms of safety, in terms of access for people. It, it was a really well-done, and many people noticed it, that it hadn't been done that way before, but it was a very, very good measure, and that when you left it, it, you know, everything was a back from the intersection, that's a dangerous intersection to begin with. So, I just wanted to pass that on, that was well-done, so, thank you.
Any more comments for these gentlemen? You're off the hook.
If I could, that does not mean you're off the hook. You do have commitment to better, yeah, better reporting and structuring of how the plan evolves and what you have to do. Your comments are good, put that in. Various areas, if you do know that you're going to be working in an area like that, I think try to be a little bit more specific, and keep the flow of information coming through council to the public. This is, the plan is a working plan, we realize that, it has to be amendable and adaptable to your conditions, but it still has to retain the confidence of the, of the community, so, thank you.
I have a question, Will, maybe Rob, the fire chief, can answer. I noticed the fire calls are up from one twenty-four, or medical calls, from one twenty-four to one eighty-four. What is our legal requirement for medical calls as far as the fire department, emergency vehicles showing up? And the numbers have seemed to be increasing, is this unusual?
I wouldn't say it's unusual, I think when we switched dispatch late last year, that made a big difference, that increased the amount of calls that we were called to. We have an agreement with a tiered response agreement, that we go to the priority three and four calls, and there's a list of about seven criteria to meet. So, as long as the call meets the criteria, they, they ask for us to attend.
So, they screen the calls for, depending on what the emergency is?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I want to know. Okay.
Counselor Owens?
Yeah, Rob, just to clarify for the public, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe when, when the firefighters respond, your role is to stabilize the patient and wait until the ambulance comes to pick them up, that you're not allowed to transport them, is that correct?
That's correct, we don't transport.
So, you're there basically, and, and it's been my experience that you usually get there before the ambulances, because there's less ambulances available.
And wouldn't switching dispatch getting a, a more efficient process there? We're starting to get there again more quickly.
Yeah, so, in other words, you are playing a role that's important to the safety of this community. You're, you're getting there before the paramedics to stabilize the patients, that we're not just spending money to send you out there and hold hands.
No, no, definitely not.
Thanks, Rob.
Counselor Patrick Adams?
Through your worship to Rob, so, for annual and follow-ups under inspections, what would be an annual and follow-up? What defines that?
We have a list, we've divided, because of the four platoons, there's a list of inspections, each one gets so many, so, tho- those are, on the list, that's their annual inspections. And if they go, and they notice any infractions, you'll give them time, so when you go back to make sure they've done what you said, that would be considered a follow-up.
So, are these specific to commercial buildings then, and industrial?
The, commercial, industrial, duplexes, we.
So, where would inspections be for residential, and doing like smoke alarm checks to make sure that we are compliant?
There's not really a set, we try and keep it to the, like, commercial, industrial, multi-residential, not the homes right now.
Is it in the scope to be able to do that, under the?
It is, for sure, yeah, definitely.
Because I know at last meeting, we talked about having a, a goal for inspections, and were you able to receive any feedback as to?
I asked one of the firefighters to come up with a plan, he's still working on it, but. Like, I, we could easily do five to ten residences.
A quarter?
I would say a, a shift, like a day.
That's good.
I, I think that's important, the point that you brought up, Patrick, and that's part of the education to the public, especially with the fire, for fire preta- pre- prevention, so. I know there's, that master plan had a lot of different things to, to do, it's gonna be a challenge.
Yes.
Patrick?
For the inspections for the houses, I don't want to see like the hundred and sixty-five dollar fines for no smoke alarms being available, but if we were to provide the smoke alarms and purchase those, that would be a much safer alternative for them, rather than a hundred and sixty-five dollar fee, they could have a, say, as an example, forty-dollar smoke alarm purchased, and if that can be put back on the tax bill, then that's still something that would make the community safer, and have that home be in compliance for safety, without having to charge a hundred and sixty-five dollars on, on an individual.
That would definitely be an option, yes.
You do have two accountants in the very back going very white on you, and I, I think it's, tell me if I'm wrong, but it's a challenge of collecting again, and going in, one of the things, Rob, how do you, like you say, four to five on a shift, houses on the shift, how many do you go to that aren't available to you? So, like, nobody's there, nobody lets you in.
That was the big issue the last time we tried a, a program was, we were going out in the, I guess it was the daytime, and not a lot of people were home.
I think that in some of the other communities, to your point, though, Counselor, when they have their fire prevention week, they also start talking to the kids in school and saying, yeah, we're coming to your home and all that, and building up, and then there's a defined period where people know to expect them, and it's in a friendly atmosphere, in a sense. So, it might be something that we could look at with the next fire prevention week, and that, just a suggestion.
Yeah, definitely some.
Maybe just a, a blitz every three, four months, or whatever.
With some media coverage first, for sure, yeah.
Counselor White?
Be up here. Um, there is seventy-seven false fire calls re- recorded last year. How many resulted in revenue, in fines, in the charges that are well, well within the scope to lay of the fire department? I know you might have to come back with actual numbers, but out of seventy-seven, how many did you charge the fee for?
There would have been no charges.
So, you don't charge when you get called repeatedly to?
See, the, the problem is, there was probably only about four or five addresses when I did this number, but we have to decide what constitutes a false alarm, like, people learn very quickly to call us off before we get there. So, should the false call start when we're notified? Should it start when we actually leave the building? Or when we actually get onto the scene, you know what I mean? Because, because we'll inform them of the bylaw, so they learn very quickly to call us off. And then, the other issue is, say, you noticed smoke in a building, you call it in, should they be charged? Like, is it, like, should it be alarm system malfunction? Uh, human pers- like, there's human perceived, there's all these different criteria, but nothing.
So, there is no, no revenue with the false?
No, no, like, when I went through the stats, there might have been, out of the four or five addresses, one that we went to twice, but people learn very quickly to, to give us a call and say, it's not a, it's not a fire.
And at the same time, we don't want to discourage people from calling, because that's really the ultimate goal, so.
And I think the other thing, Rob, if they're using that nine-one-one number, and even if they call back, it's not going to stop, well, certainly won't stop the police from showing up. If you're in the middle of a call and the truck's halfway there, they, they're not coming back, are they? Are they going there?
The truck?
Yeah.
It all depends when we're notified, right? A lot of the times, we're notified before we leave, because they're, they're gonna call right away, knowing that they don't want to get charged, they don't want us to leave. And then, when the, the way it works, when the guys leave the hall, they carry a cellphone and forward the phones to the cellphone, so they could get the call en route as well, that it's not a fire.
Okay.
Could, I ask if there are questions, we have the three from Counselor White, are there other questions that we should be addressing over the coming week and a half? How did I know?
I will say, yes, Will, thanks for the staff's input on these Q and As. I think it's a, it's a great communication piece, because counselors only meet every two weeks, and we don't get to sit down and talk to each other much in between, and often, similar questions or, or thoughts, concerns are with other counselors, so this gives us an opportunity to all hear the same story, and I think it's a good process, so. Great to see us continue that.
Go forward.
I would just like to see the documents pertaining to the directional change to Market Street, as to why that direction was chosen as the best route. Was there any documents, was there a risk assessment, was there a traffic management plan done to decide that route? Certainly, after its implementation, you'll certainly, if you drive past the, the gas station, you'll see a nice big ruts where everyone cuts through there and makes the right on the Water Street, as well as you have a large backup on Government Road, trying to make the left on the Water Street during the major flow of traffic, as people are trying to get back there. So, I'm just trying to see why that was decided, and for clarification, we do have six months from that initial decision to overturn that?
You have six months, it stays as it is for six months unless there's extra information that comes forward, and then it can be.
So, so if there was.
Roughly the end of March, I think. I intended on bringing that back, because I have some, the same concerns, but quite honestly, that was passed by the previous council. I think we erred, it was not the recommendation of the manager planning, and I think it's called, caused more of a hindrance in anything. I was going up on the one-way on, on Market Street last week, and somebody, young lady, was coming right at me, and didn't realize it was a one-way, and you're right, because it's one-way coming from down the hill, from, I think that's still part of LaBelle, coming down, and then we've got one-way going the opposite way. It is very confusing for people, and a left-hand turn is like taking your life in your hands. So, I, I think we have to relook at that one. I don't like the way it's working out, but I think we need to get staff to do a report, and we'll bring it up at the end of March to do that.
If, if I could suggest, the paperwork we would bring forward would be our recommendations, and that's part of the record from that time, at, at that council meeting. I, I really would suggest you take a look at the recordings of that, because you, it's, it's, it's edifying. It, it kind of took its own life, I think, and didn't take it in a very good direction, but it will help you understand how that decision kind of evolved and how we got to it. Certainly, I was there last night, and somebody ran right through there, too. It's not something that we're particularly happy with, we would like to revisit that, but to try to summarize all the different discussions that happened at the table, and that went on for quite a while, it, yeah, that's gonna be a tough one. Fair to say, staff didn't recommend it, didn't work out the way we thought, and we want to revisit it, too.
Yeah, staff did do one of these reports to council, and it's detailed, and unfortunately, council saw it differently. I think we made a mistake, so, well, we look at it.
Do you want me to still bring that for, forward, or I can, I can just? We'll do that, thank you.
I just want you to know that you don't have to wait the six months, if it, if it's a safety issue or security issue that everybody is concerned about, then it can come back. Our procedure bylaw is, is generally written that if council wants to vote two-thirds to bring something back, you can. It's just that, it's kind of a new council, so I think you, I would have to look into this, because the person who moved the motion to begin with has to be the one who moves it the second time, which isn't going to work this council round. But if it is a security issue, and it is a safety issue, definitely can come back. This would not be the first time that council has, has changed traffic and parking issue. I don't, you probably remember when, right here, coming down Prospect Avenue, they put a, a four-way stop right here, and it caused an awful lot of issues and some very close near misses, and so council had to revert it back to what it was originally, and they did that very quickly, that, that was definitely a safety issue.
Could that be brought back under a notice of motion?
Certainly.
Okay, we'll discuss that tomorrow on our trip.
Counselor Owens?
Yeah, you know, it's, it's kind of nice in a way, because it's a fixable issue, but that issue with the change, with making that a one-way street, is the issue I hear the most about when I'm out in a boat. And I don't want to criticize the past council, they, they made a decision based on what they heard and what they thought was best, but from what I've seen, and even myself, I've been driving up there, and I go to make that right turn, and, oh, yeah, I can't do that. But one of the big issues that wasn't discussed during that time period is every winter, it seems, we have transport trucks that get stuck on that hill. Now, if you're going west on Government Road, you're stuck there until that truck is moved. And, you know, if you have to wait till heavy-duty tow truck comes up from Cobalt or New Lescard, I mean, there's no escape route, and I think that's something that was missed. But I, I would thank the, the mayor if he would bring that back to council, so, because a lot of people have voiced concern about that change, thank you.
The issue as well on Government Road and the interference between parked vehicles. and the interference between, uh, parked vehicles, snowbanks and everything else, we are bringing forward to as well. We were going to put it on this particular agenda, but we wanted to have the opportunity to speak to some of the business owners and make sure that we're not inadvertently stepping on toes because it's not just Government Road, there's a couple of other locations. But you'll be seeing that probably on the twenty-ninth, I think.
Ironically, the original request was not for a one-way street. It was for commercial parking for the old Kreski store. And it got twisted and turned, as, as Wolf said, uh, built on a, a whole new life of totally different from what we started from. So I think it, I've heard a lot of complaints as well, so I agree. We have to relook at it. Uh, any notice of motions? None declared? Confirmation bylaw?
It's moved by Counselor Adams. Sorry, moved by Counselor Adams, seconded by Counselor Owens. The bylaw nineteen dash zero zero nine, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held January fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, be read a first, second and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? You're okay, Rob. Dismissed.
It's moved by Counselor.
Oh, not, uh, Counselor's report?
No, okay, sorry.
Uh, Counselors' reports? Any comments? I'd just like to, uh, congratulate the one-hundredth Anniversary Centennial Committee, uh, for the gala night. Uh, there was two-hundred-and-fifty-eight in attendance. Unfortunately, I have trouble keeping up up to midnight, but it was a great event and, uh, well done. I'd also like to congratulate, uh, the Children's Wish Foundation who raised seventy thousand dollars. Uh, Salvation Army Kettles raised, uh, fifty-one thousand, three-hundred-and-forty dollars. And the Club Rushilu had their wine and cheese and raised sixteen thousand, five hundred for the hospital foundation. I think that's just an indication of how giving this community is. And, uh, not only do I congra- congratulate the groups that, uh, worked hard to, uh, raise these funds, I, uh, thank the community for their, uh, generosity. Okay?
Okay, it's moved by Pat, uh, Counselor Adams, seconded by Counselor Owens. The council adjourned its regular meeting of January fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen to an in-camera meeting to discuss pursuant to section two thirty-nine, two of the municipal act. Personal matters about five identifiable individuals are proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality and an issue concerning potential litigation concerning the municipality.
All in favor? Unanimous? Thank, thank you.